It Owen, thank you ma'am. Uh, at this time, I will ask you to please stand for a moment of silence. Amen. You may be seated. At this time, I'd ask Dr. Bracy, and he will introduce our students for this evening. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you Chairman Parent, and good evening to everyone. I have the pleasure this evening to introduce two students from Woodrow Wilson High School, who will be featured here tonight, bringing us the Pledge of Allegiance and the student statement. And from Woodrow Wilson, I have first, and as I call your name, you can start making your way to the podium, Reuben Todd the 4th. Reuben is a senior at Wilson and captain of the wrestling team. He's also performed with Port Town Magic and participated with numerous community service activities. Most recently, Reuben competed in the American Legion National Oratorical Contest for the 6th Eastern District, where he gave a compelling 10-minute speech on the 2nd, 3rd, and 15 amendments and Article 2, Section 4 of the United States Constitution, winning the contest. With the help of his history teacher, Ms. Christina Willis, Reuben is confident that he will move on to the state competition, and I'll add, I'm sure that he'll win it. Reuben is here with his mother, Ms. Angie Hodges, and Ms. Hodges and any other members of his family at this time, will you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Daniel. Cadet Sergeant Sarah Daniel is a freshman at Woodrow Wilson High School and a member of the Army JROTC Bravo Company. She was selected as the CTE Cadet Student of the Month for October 2017, and as a member of the JROTC Drill Team. Cadet Sergeant Daniel has earned over 70 volunteer hours in her first semester in AJROTC. Because of her volunteer commitment, she has been awarded the White Volunteer Accord, which is given to cadets that volunteer for 10 events. Most recently, Cadet Sergeant Daniel has a cumulative GPA of 3.3, along with a perfect attendance to date. Cadet Sergeant is accompanied by her mom, Ms. Lori Conkler, and grandmother, Ms. Judy Conkler, and will you all stand, and any other members of the family stand at this And during the break, Cadet Sergeant Daniel shared with me that she, because when I saw her bio, and it said that she was a cadet sergeant, and I saw that she was a freshman, I say, well, something has to be extraordinary about this, because she has really moved through the ranks quick. And her mother shared with me that she's the, I guess she's probably the first to make that rank as early as she has done, so congratulations. And Woodrow Wilson High School, Dr. Tim Johnson, I wanted to recognize Dr. Johnson, the principal, who's here as well. Dr. Johnson, if you want to stay back there, but we wanted to recognize you wanted to... Alright, so at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Cadet Sergeant, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may all be seated.
Thank you.
I would like to do my speech. A constitution is a plan for government. This is what I was taught as a high school student. But, with any plan, there may be a need to alter it to fit whatever the needs are at any time. Our constitution has added amendments to fit the needs of our government since its ratification. Each amendment addresses a specific issue, need, or plan for the people and government of our country. For better or for worse, we use this constitution as the supreme law of the land. The rights afforded to the citizens are housed in this monumental document. Also, many cases have taken center stage in many courtrooms, including the Supreme Court of the United States. For example, the constitutional right to keep and bear arms can be beneficial but contradictory at the same time. The Second Amendment states that a well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the citizens to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. I repeat, the right of the citizens to keep and bear arms. Keep that in mind. Now, in 2014, there was a single mom from Philadelphia who purchased a small handgun. She made sure she had legal documents and a license to go with it. Upon leaving the state of Pennsylvania to New Jersey, she was pulled over for an unsafe lane change. She alerted the officer that she had a weapon with the legal documents to go with it. But she was arrested and sentenced 10 years in prison for having a concealed weapon. Tell me, what was the problem? The Second Amendment of our constitution allowed us to have a weapon. Why didn't it protect her? This is the same constitution that allowed a Florida native to shoot and kill an unarmed teen over loud music. This man, he used the Second Amendment right, but he used it to kill. Investigators say that the teen had no weapon on him, or in the car he was in. Investigators also say that the man was a gun collector, and he frequently visited the gun range. So, should we add an amendment to amend the Second Amendment? But, how would we determine that? Should the Second Amendment be limited to those who actually have a true need for a gun? But if we do, what, how would we determine that as well? Well, as teens like myself go to court to get our driver's license, should those who are willing to purchase a gun have to stand before the court as well? Because a car is a deadly weapon, that needs a judge's discretion before just handing a teen a license. But not for guns? Because a gun is also a deadly weapon. Well, gun laws are always on the voting table. Everyone should have an input, like with many things. Congress will bring it to the vote, bring it to a vote, and the citizens of the United States, like you and I, will speak on it at the polls. After all, the 15th Amendment granted Americans the right to vote by declaring that the right of the citizens to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude. Voters' rights will further expand with the Voters' Rights Act of 1965. But, there will be some issues and resistance to change. For example, in Gwin versus the United States of 1915, the Supreme Court concluded that the Oklahoma grandfather clause limited those the right to vote to those whose grandfathers were eligible to vote in 1867 after the Civil War. This, this was unconstitutional, because it excluded all men of African descent, and it violated the 15th Amendment, which extends the right to vote to all US citizens, specifically males of all races, except women. The 15th Amendment, along with the Voters' Rights Act of 1965, signed into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson, will overcome legal barriers at state and local, at state and local level to prevent widespread discrimination against minority groups like African-Americans, who are trying to exercise their right to vote. The 15th Amendment, of course, Section 2 of the 15th Amendment, Congress must approve and enforce appropriate legislation to protect a qualified citizen's right to vote, hence the Voters' Rights Act of 1965. Now, we already know that our constitutional amendments do not always match the needs which we apply them to. For example, in 2013, the 3rd Amendment was used to justify the occupation of residency by police to try to get an advantage over a suspected criminal in a neighboring home in Henderson, Nevada. The court ruled against police. Clearly, the 3rd Amendment has no relevancy in today's America. It is the most litigated amendment, and the Supreme Court has never decided a case on the basis of it. Our government will probably not have our citizens house soldiers in their homes whether we are at war or not. It just doesn't make sense, considering today's modern convenience and the logistics of just arranging housing for our soldiers would just be much easier. It would not be a waging war against the government and the president, considering that we have been through far more way important issues in the past that needed the decision of the government and its people. For example, Watergate and Nixon, that may be one for the history books, all the elements of a great suspense novel, or made for TV drama. Article 2, Section 4 of the United States Constitution states that the President, Vice President, or other civil officers of the United States shall not, shall be removed on impeachment for the conviction of treason, bribery, or other high crimes and misdemeanors. So yes, Watergate and Nixon, initially thought to be a run-of-the-mill robbery, soon we are knee-deep in wiretapping and the stealing of documents from the Democratic National Committee's headquarters at Watergate. Soon after, Nixon was linked to the bribery attempts and the efforts to get the CIA to stop the FBI's investigation. Well, a constitution, our constitution, has its perks and flaws. A written plan for government that affects all of us, all US citizens, no exclusions. In order to live safe and free, we must advocate the social contract, which establishes justice. And amongst them, justice, peace, prosperity, protection, and freedom. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb? Mr. Lamb?
Thank you Chairman Parent. Mr. Todd? I just want to say that as a history teacher with 20-plus years, you have got one of the most amazing, thought-out, brilliant minds. And it would be a pleasure and an honor to have you in one of my American Government classes. Congratulations.
Yes, well, sir Todd, would you mind coming back up? I just had a few, a few questions for you. Where do you plan to go to college?
Norfolk State University.
Norfolk State, okay. I teach at ODU.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. He made a mistake.
I tell you, I would love to have you in one of my sociology classes. So, if you're interested in ODU, please, please get in contact with me. And that was a brilliant speech. Do you plan to go to law school?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, maybe one day you'll be a Supreme Court Justice.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Ackerson?
Hi, Mr. Todd. It's not many moments or times where I am speechless. So, I just want to say that as a former president, I'm very proud and empowered by your speech. And also, I'm glad that you're going to Norfolk State University as well. So, we would be alumni in two schools if Dr. Whitaker don't recruit you to ODU. But, but great job, and it's crazy how you remembered. It's like a five-minute speech. I was waiting for you to look down, but awesome.
You never did. Thank you.
Great.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Todd, I simply want to say impressive, outstanding, and the sky is the limit for your dreams. Just stay focused, and whatever you want to do, we know you're going to do it. And I foresee you being one of our Supreme Court justices. So keep up the good work.
Thanks. Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
First, to Mr. Todd, that was amazing. Thank you, I truly appreciated it. But also to Ms. Daniel, Cadet Sergeant Daniel, I want to thank you in advance for your willingness to be of service to our country. I appreciate it.
And at this time, Sergeant Daniel, would you please come to the podium? Ms. Ackerson has a gift that she would like to present on behalf of the board to both of you.
Thank you. I took you to a lot of great events, so keep it up. Great job again. I'm proud to be a alumni at Wilson, you guys are proud. Great job. Thank you.
Alright, at this time, we'll have the school board mission statement by Ms. Ackerson.
Alright, at this time, we'll have the school board mission statement by Ms. Ackerson. I'm all thrown off. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is attendance by electronic vote. Madam Clerk, members of the board, would you please indicate your attendance through electronic vote?
Eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, board members, is the approval of tonight's agenda. You have seen it, you've had to review it. Please indicate your preference for the agenda through electronic vote.
Move for approval?
Move for approval, second, is there a second? Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. At this time, we will have our discussion of our student representative's report. Ian Robinson, report to your report.
Evening, everyone. Chair, Chair Vice Chair, Dr. Bracy, and members of the board, everyone in attendance. I'd like to start by saying, why do you guys always have to put me next to the, like, right after the... Wow.
Only to make you better.
Congratulations, those two remarkable students, I'm glad they're in Portsmouth. I'd like to, like to start off my report. At the last meeting I attended, I said that I would be going around to the high schools and asking them about the First College Program, their thoughts and opinions on it, and their thoughts and opinions on the rest of the schools, how, any issues they think that the schools have that can be improved in their, in their eyes. So, I'm going to start with the First College Program. As you all know, First College has started, it's a couple weeks in. I gotta say, I love it. I love being free. Getting out at 10:30 every day is amazing. No, it's absolutely, I've said before, it's an amazing program, I'm really glad we offer it. Some students have told me they do not, not they don't like the program, it's not for them. I have a couple of friends that are, that I've spoken to on, on it, and they are in the higher class, and they've said, yeah, I would definitely take it, but I'm trying to go to MIT, or I'm trying to go to all these schools that probably won't take the credits. So, which is why I said, I almost didn't participate, because a lot of the schools I want to go to will not take the credits from TCC as complete credits. But, the students that are in it, and said, yes, I will, I will be doing the First College Program. I spoke to juniors that said, I will be doing the First College Program in the future. They said, it's an amazing opportunity, and I want to do it, I need those credits, get them cheaper, easier. Absolutely, the First College Program is going great, as I've seen. And now, now's the portion of my, my speech where I'm going to go into the things that students have yelled at me about, for me to yell at you guys about.
Right. That's fair.
So, a lot of these, I'm, I would just like to discuss with you all. If you don't want to discuss them, that's fine, I'm cool with it. One thing that students constantly ask me about is the dress code. And I've read over the dress code, I don't know if all the students that I've spoken to me have, but, there are people that ask me, hey, can I wear, can I wear slides and flip-flops to school? I'm like, no, no you can't. It's written in the dress code because of this. But even after I've shot down every, most of the arguments, they said, well, what about rips and jeans? Now, I know this, I don't know if I should be coming here for this, telling you guys, but rips and jeans are, I love them, they are a great style choice, I look great with ripped jeans. I don't know if you guys do. But it is, is a definite way to express yourselves as a person, to your peer group. And I know, I know at Churchland, you can get pulled over for having a rip in your jean in most places. A big, a big point is you cannot have a rip above the knee, or at the knee. I understand, very far above the knee, it is not okay to have rips and holes in your clothing, for obvious reasons. But, I've, I've watched people get written up for dress code issues for, if you all... Having rips, like right here, right here, right here. Now, I know this isn't a board-wide thing, it is based on the administration, and what they deem fit is acceptable, not acceptable in the educational environment. But, I would just like to tell you guys that the students don't like it. I'm just telling you guys your opinion, their opinion, because, trust me, they yelled at me. Harsh words were said. I can't say I didn't cry, because I did. No, definitely the, I'm not saying that, if it's the board's pleasure, to, not to amend the dress code, but maybe to be slightly more lenient on, you know, things like that. I'm not necessarily speaking directly to you guys, I'm also speaking to administrators, principals, I have vice principals that call kids out for those, because is it really not okay to have a rip in your, at your knee with jeans, when you can wear shorts that are higher than that? I don't feel that seeing someone's knee is a distraction. If you guys do, I mean, that's, that's up to you guys. Knees aren't necessarily a distraction, but that, that's a big thing that, that's a big thing that the students have told me to let you guys be aware of. Another thing is classes. The students are very happy with, you know, the CTE classes that are coming up, not everyone wants to go to college. A lot of students think there should be more classes. I know people that are begging for more AP classes, a bigger AP program. I know at Churchland, we offer, I want to say, four AP classes, maybe five. Some are online, but if you don't get enough people, you're not going to be able to take that. I know there are a lot of teachers that are qualified, I've spoken to some teachers too, that are qualified to teach it. I don't know if that's a possibility to increase the AP program. I have also, again, ones and twos in the class telling me, hey Ian, why don't we have an IB program? I'm like, hmm, that'd be cool, but, like, you should tell the school board about the IB program. I'm like, okay, all, I will, I will let them know, as I'm pretty sure they already know. Yeah, we, we have a lot of bright kids, and they do want to take a lot more classes to better, their chances of getting into better schools, and to enrich themselves. There have also been concerns from students about increasing the curriculum in personal finance classes, to better teach how to, you know, do taxes and stuff. I've had a couple students come to me about the concern for increased health classes, to broaden the, what is taught in these health classes, for, you know, young adults that need to be taught things for health reasons. And I had one guy say, hey, can we have a woodshop class? I know, that's, that's a big commitment, and I don't know that that's a possibility, but I'm just letting you guys know what they are screaming at me. They threw things at me, you guys, I'm really...
You're a tough guy.
I know, it's alright, they bounced, it's cool. The last thing I just want to talk to you guys about is another big concern, students have given me, is the time students have between classes. Got to get, get from this class, get through a sea of people, maybe run by your locker, get some books, and get to another class within five minutes. Now, I know for those on the track team, that would be easy. For people like me, when I was, when I was a freshman at Churchland, I had, I had gym, and then I had Spanish. I had five minutes to get changed from a gym clothes, out of gym, all the way across the school. I know some of you have been Churchland High, obviously. From the gym, all the way up to the second floor, on the other side of the hall of the school. It wasn't fun, I ran a lot, I lost about 12 pounds from running, it was great. Students, students aren't asking, well, they are. Students want, like, longer lunch, and longer, they want a recess. Like, y'all can't have recess, you're adults. Students want longer, they want less class. I'm like, you guys can't have less class. Like, can we have more time to switch classes? That would be great, because it's not easy to walk through people that are walking 2 miles an hour in front of you. So they said, like, even a minute would make a world of difference. I know, I went to Wilson and, to ask their students about what they thought, and they said, yeah, we have a new tardy system, and we all hate it, because they could not get from one class to another without getting called out for being tardy. I know, if you have too many tardies, you're not passing a class, that's not good. Even if you come in like 30 seconds late, if that bell has rung, and you are in the doorway, I know teachers that are going to mark you tardy, and it's not good. So, I'm going to ask you guys, I feel like one minute. You obviously have to extend the day or something, but, you know, if students could have just a little more time. I know there are obviously students that are going to hang around in class, in the hallway, but for those that are trying to get to class, and get through those people, it would, it would really help. Yeah, those are, those are my concerns from the student body. If you guys have any questions, comments, please talk to me.
Ian, just, and I'll call them the board members, just talking with Dr. Bracy about the TCC transfer, and they're telling me that out-of-state colleges and private schools, but not in-state.
Right.
So, and the other thing that I want to make a comment, is about the jeans.
Yes, sir.
Now, when I was going to school, back in the 50s... And...
The 30s?
I grew up in a small rural town. And I had, you know, I had maybe two pairs of blue jeans. And over the course of the year, I had a hole in my knee, and my mother would patch that hole. Now, my grandkids are going out and buying these, what do you call them? Ripped jeans? And I would just tell, I'd tell them the story, and they'd just look at me like, you're out of touch. You know? So, but, that's something that Dr. Bracy can address with the administrators. The other issues about tardiness, I think that's something else Dr. Bracy can, to address. But, you had some good points. Ms. Hines?
Ian, always a pleasure, because, you know, it's always fun with you. What I was going to say about the rips and the jeans, I know that this is an issue, because it is, it's a fashion piece, it's that expressive piece. I do know that in some divisions, they require leggings or tights, especially for, for girls, just so that there's no skin that shows. I don't know if that's an option. I'm not up to date on our dress code policies, I don't have to enforce it every day. But, to get to your class asks, when we talk about the health class, are we talking about body functions health class? Are we talking like weightlifting? Or are we talking about, what's specific about the health class? Because I can see weightlifting, and I can see, you know, more of a workout-minded health class. Or are we talking about body functions, and how the body functions kind of health class? Are we talking here? That's my second one. The other thing I would ask too, is maybe, since we can't go out for lunch, or have longer lunches per se, if there's not a way that we can create outside eating areas, to influence, to, for, to allow our students to have some more outside time. Churchland does, Wilson not. We ate on the Commons or on the square when I was there. I don't know where the light comes from, you know, on top of the Commons, but maybe that's something we can look at, especially for, just to liven up the place a little bit and give some more options. So, but my real question was about the health classes, and as always, thank you for being you. And maybe with our students coming into the First College Program, now that we've changed the, the arrangement per se, where students can actually get an associate's degree, it doesn't matter where you're going to school, once you have that associate's degree, whether you're going to MIT, Stanford, or, you know, that associate's degree can't be taken away. you're going to MIT, Stanford, or, you know, that associate's degree can't be taken away. So, like Dr. Bracy said, the, the private colleges don't necessarily have to accept them, but now that we've changed the trajectory and the availability of getting an associate's degree with your high school degree, maybe that will entice some more students to come into the first college program to take advantage of it. So, thank you, and you can answer about the health classes now. If you have an answer, if not, it's not a big deal, we'll talk later.
Yeah. So, I know at Churchland, we have a weightlifting class. It's cool, I guess. I don't, I don't lift weights, so I don't, I'm not interested. No, it would be the first one about body functions and things that students may need to know. Again, I have not taken a health class in like three years, so I'm not necessarily up to date on the curriculum. I just had a bunch of students very adamant about telling me that we do, we could use one and it would be good for students. And back to your, your jeans thing, I would love to wear leggings under my jeans that are ripped. I don't know how well that would go off, but.
You need to touch with your intercraceal.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Let me just ask a question and think back, aside from whatever was thrown at you or made you cry. Because it seems as though this has now been a reoccurring theme that you've brought to us a couple of times now. When you said that other students are talking to you about offerings, academic offerings, CTE, AP courses, and now I think this is the first time I've heard you talk about an interbaccalaureate program in personal finances, would you say that you're getting a lot of inquiries from many students across the district about more academic offerings or not?
Okay, so I'm not gonna lie, I'm one of the students that also says we should have more AP classes. At Churchland, a lot of my, a lot of the people I know are AP kids. They take three or four, they take all the ones we can offer. And they've said, why don't we have more?
Yeah.
It's definitely, I know Churchland is big on it.
Okay, so, yeah, so a lot of, so a lot of students, and Chairman Parent, and the reason why I ask this is because, and I know we've had discussions and I know we're starting to move in directions, but I, I'm finding this, I'm really encouraged of the fact that we actually have students that are asking for these things, but also too, with regards to the CTE, asking for more offerings in, in that as well. I, I think it's something that, not only have we had a discussion and know that there's an importance, but the fact that on budget surveys, that's came back from the general public, from adults, but now even students are talking more in this area. And I'm really encouraged by that. And I know that we'll start to, however, whenever we can, to even start expediting coming up with more offerings and so forth. So, thank you, Ian.
Thank you. Seeing no, oh, Dr. Whittaker.
One question. Did any of the students mention about, anything about maybe a later start time for school?
Yes, I did have a couple of students at Wilson ask if we could start school at nine o'clock.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I did. I have heard.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Thank you all.
Seeing no other questions, thank you for your report, as always. The next item on the agenda is the curriculum and instruction. Dr. Winn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. I'm always excited to give you the monthly curriculum and instruction report. I, again, will draw your attention to the written report that's in your board docs, but tonight we have another special treat. And, you know, I feel a little bit clairvoyant tonight, because I have two students coming to talk about their experiences with the CTE programs.
Oh, how about that?
I guess I was led to do that. We have two students from IC Norcom High School tonight. Casey Battle is the daughter of Paul and Latoya Battle. Casey, you wanna stand up, Casey? And she is a senior at IC Norcom. And Dr. Whittaker, you'll be happy to know that she is looking at ODU as a possibility for her college. She wants to major in sports medicine and she's presently in the class and wants to take the second class during the spring semester. She's using her knowledge gained in class to work as a student athletic trainer at each game or athletic activity. We also have, and would Ms. Battle please stand, Latoya Battle, her mother? She's here with her tonight. Thank you. Casey, you can come on up, Casey. And we also have Quentin Jones, who is the son of Lakeisha Haru. Quentin is also a senior, and Quentin, would you come up please, at IC Norcom High School? He is participating and has participated in the cybersecurity camp, the class, and the club. And presently, he is a first college student and he plans to attend a four-year university in the fall. And with them tonight, we have Dr. Legana Foster, who is the principal at IC Norcom. Would you stand, please? And we have two very special people who are their mentors. Mr. Michael Hill, who is here to support our students, is a Fleet Systems Engineering Team Lead with United Atlantic Region. And we have Mr. Derek Dozier, who is the Cybersecurity Workforce Program Manager. So we want to thank them for coming out to support our students as well. And now I'll let you guys tell them about your experience.
Good evening, Mr., I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Parent, Chairman, Dr. Bracy, school board members, parents, and other guests. My name is Casey Battle and I am currently taking this, sorry, the sports medicine class at IC Norcom High School.
That's great.
I became interested when I volunteered to help with the football, the football team and other fall sports. By taking this class, I have been able to expand my knowledge as a student athletic trainer. For example, I learned, I'm sorry, I learned how to properly clean and bandage wounds. Also, I learned how to tape, I learned how to tape athletes' wrists, ankles, hands, sorry, hands and thumbs. As a result of my experience as an athletic trainer and by taking a sports medicine class at IC Norcom High School, I plan to study sports medicine in college.
Very good.
Thank you. Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Quentin Jones. Like you were told, I'm a senior at IC Norcom High School. And I would like to briefly state some facts about myself. Growing up, I used to always like technology. I've always been fond of computers, cars, but I've never really known, like specifically, what I wanted to do in life. Freshman year in high school, I met Mr. Moore and he introduced me to robotics. I was in his Principal Tech One class. And it was a great experience. I love messing with the robots. We learned programming. We had a lot of hands-on activities. And this really encouraged me to pursue a career in robotics. But I also wanted to broaden my horizons on the different job fields and everything that I could do. As of recently, I was introduced to the cybersecurity program. My first experience was going to a cyber camp at Norfolk State University. And it was wonderful. I learned more programming. We had ethical hacking and we learned how to set up firewalls to password requirements and it was a lot. I feel like students can learn a lot of like teamwork as well as actual like job requirement skills. And I really do look forward to having like future cybersecurity programs. And as far as our program, I really do like hope I can come back to help students and encourage more students to get involved, because this is a really good opportunity. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Quentin and Casey, and we're really happy that you've had the opportunity to participate in these career and technical education experiences and very proud to hear that you'll be coming back to help us continue to support them. Thank you.
And Casey, I wanted to tell you something. Tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock, I'm going to be meeting with a, a trainer who's going to teach me how to use the kinesive tape, because I have some ankle issues and back issues. So, I understand kinesive tape and, and you're going in a great field with sports medicine, because everybody needs to know that and everybody likes sports. So, congratulations. And for you, Quincy, I want you to, you know, what I wanted for Christmas, I didn't get. I wanted an Iroma, so that I don't have to vacuum the house anymore. I just wanted the little thing just to go around the house and vacuum. So you create one for me and I'll, I'll buy it, okay?
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you all.
At this time, this Alan has a comment. This Alan?
Yes, school board member Fleming and I, on the first day of school, went to IC Norcom and we wandered into the cybersecurity class and it was very full and it was full of excitement about the new offerings. And, and to you, ma'am, not only will the sports medicine help you with sports type of items, but as, as we age, that population will definitely need your services in the future. As, I'm not saying that Chairman Parent is aged, however.
Right. I have, I admit, I have.
It is gonna be important that you have those skills, because I work in healthcare and what you do is so needed as we age and our, as we successfully age in place. So thank you both and I look forward to seeing great things from both of you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay?
All right. Thank you so much.
At this time, we'll have a presentation. Dr. Bracy, Pat Craft.
Yes, Mrs. Ziegler will come and introduce the representatives from Pat Craft.
Good evening, board members. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Board members, tonight you've heard a report during your work session about some project recommendations and a building report that has been done. But I'd like to also let you know that we have been doing innovative things to take care and to steward the buildings that we have across the division already. And one of the things that the board approved was a project to replace flooring at Brighton and James Hurst Elementary Schools. And when we evaluated projects or products to replace this flooring, we wanted to look outside the box. So we delivered to the school system a modern product that is easy to maintain and that will last hopefully for a great number of years. And because of our efforts to be innovative and to think out of the box in terms of flooring materials, we have with us tonight Allison Copely and Kiran Corcoran, who is the Director of Performance Markets for Pat Craft Flooring. And they're here to help us, to acknowledge our efforts and also to help us make a down payment on the other projects that you heard about earlier this evening. So I'd invite them to come join me. And also Tom Marsh is with us. He is our project coordinator in operations that spearheads a lot of these projects and implementations for us. Yeah, Pat Craft Flooring is, we're proud to present you with this Schools of the Future Award. This is a nationwide contest that we do and you were one of two schools that were chosen in our contest, where you used the Pat Craft Flooring to enhance the, the learning environment. So, congratulations.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution, a resolution, African-American History Month. Dr. Bracy?
At this time, Dr. Cromarty will come and present the resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. The first of two resolutions put forward for board consideration tonight is a resolution for African-American History Month. And it reads, whereas as advocates for children, we work to provide appropriate opportunities for them to acquire essential tools, skills, and knowledge necessary for their success and future well-being, and whereas education has always and continues to be an integral part of our instilling and appreciation for America's defining values, freedom, equality, and respect for one another, and whereas the Portsmouth City School Board is proud to support America's role as the leader of discovery and innovation and is deeply committed to ensuring that our graduates possess marketable skills, and whereas the professional staff has an inherent obligation to provide a complete and competitive education for all students, and whereas February is traditionally designed, designated, excuse me, to recognize the achievements and contributions of African-Americans to the development and sustainability of our democracy, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth School Board recognizes February as Black History Month and that the city's citizens be encouraged to become familiar with all the important roles African-Americans have played in the making of our city, our commonwealth and nation, and be it further resolved that this resolution be archived as part of the Portsmouth School Board's official records. Proposed for adoption this 25th day of January 2018.
What is the board's pleasure?
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second final resolution pertains to career and technical education, falling in line with a valuable theme for this evening. Whereas economic and technological changes affect the nature of our work and placing increasing demands on public education, and whereas career and technical education provides our communities with school-to-career connections and is the cornerstone of a strong, well-prepared workforce, fostering industrial productivity and contributing to America's leadership in the international marketplace, and whereas career and technical education provides students with rich experiences in practical meaning, in practical and meaningful application or workplace readiness skills designed to improve the quality of education and provide appropriate opportunities for all students to experience leadership. And whereas our career and technical education programs afford students opportunities to acquire learning experience necessary to success in a complex society, and whereas the ever-increasing efforts of career and technical educators, business and industry support the growth and vitality of our local, state, and national economies by preparing graduates for career fields forecast for phenomenal growth in the next decade. And whereas, the theme for this year's observance is celebrate today, own tomorrow. Now therefore it be resolved that the Portsmouth School Board recognizes February 1st through 28th, 2018, as Career and Technical Education Month. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made part of this board's permanent record and copies be widely disseminated throughout the school division. And a framed copy be formally presented to the Curriculum and Instruction Office at the board's regular monthly meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 25th, 2018.
Board members, you've heard the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Cromarty. The next item on the agenda, the minutes for December the 7th, 2017, and December 14th, 2017, what is the board's pleasure?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, regarding the minutes, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. At this time, we will have a public comment for board non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers? Thank you.
Ms. Ann Wilbur.
Madam Clerk, did you read that section about the number of minutes?
That's okay.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five. to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Mr. Neal?
Okay, Mr. Neal?
All right. Good evening, members of the Portsmouth School Board and the public. I am Sergio Neal. First of all, I'd like to say that I think it is great to have people, or students, involved in so many different activities in the schools, especially, you know, with the varying degrees of different careers that are coming up, that is a great thing. And I see, I'd like to see the division moving forward and recognizing those varying degrees of careers and offering more opportunities. So the basis of me, the basis for me coming before you tonight are the twofold process. First process is I would like to address the addition of minutes. As some of you may be aware, I am very involved in talking with parents and teachers and students at times about different topics as they relate to education here in Portsmouth. One of the topics that came up was indeed the fact the addition of minutes to the schools, to the school day based on the weather. Now, we totally understand, you know, the dynamics behind that, whatever the case might be, as you all have to make up for classroom instruction. However, the complaint was basically from the teachers on the contract number of hours they're required to teach. It had been said several times that they teach about 1,200 hours when the requirement is only 990 hours or 180 days. Now, I'm gonna say this now, I am no expert on how the calculations work, and I wanted to make sure I brought that to the attention, because I myself would like to find that out as well, so when that conversation arises again, I can have some further information. It's one of those things where, you know, the teacher morale piece that's very near and dear to my heart is, you know, I would like to make sure that they understand the decisions that have been made. You know, we, you know, we, I can, you know, as I work in the school myself, you know, I see teachers, the workday is a load, you know, and I can tell, you know, sometimes that, you know, when they have to have, to spend additional time, you know, it kind of, you know, you can tell the degrees of frustration varies at times. Not that they don't like what they do, it's just that they would like to have their days kind of structured a little more when they have additional time, you know, you know, that they already are over, you know, they're already over teaching, as they put it, it kind of creates a strain on them. The second piece is, what, and let me go back to my first topic. It was pointed out before that board members prior had constructed today's Portsmouth School System Day. I was wondering, has the board looked at going back, taking those extra minutes that were added to the day, back and restructuring how it used to be? I'm not sure what the, can't recall what the exact timing was, but to restructure the day back to what it used to be, and making the additions based on that old schedule. Some of the more senior teachers brought that issue up. But anyway, moving forward, the day treatment programs. As we all know, there was a big deal about Medicaid fraud, whatever the case might be, in the school system, with one of the employees, that is, whatever. But there has also been a point made to that, is that if you all looked at the teacher who was doing it on another, in another realm of employment, then what about the day treatment people that actually are supposed to be in the schools, that are funded by Medicaid, that are not there taking care of the students that they are assigned to? This has been very well noted by several teachers that know that they have students in their classroom that have day treatment counselors that are assigned to them, and they're nowhere to be found. So when the student has an issue, the teacher has to bear the brunt of that, you know, of that dynamic, and try to deal with sometimes 32, 35 other students, you know. So I want to make sure that the school system is aware that when you all have these people in your buildings, that they need to do the job that they are being paid to do. And we, I think all taxpayers are very adamant about making sure that their money is spent in the best ways and wasting money for, in Medicaid, for services not rendered, it's not one of those things they want to do.
Mr. Neal, your time has expired. Board members, would you grant him another, okay, you can continue.
Okay. I mean, I just wanted to make sure I made that clear, because a lot of the times, you know, when you have kids that have services, you know, those teachers appreciate that support, and when they have to search and find the day treatment staff that's supposed to be there, that's an extra weight that they shouldn't have to, you know. I don't think it's fair to the teachers that have to go through that extra mile of finding another full-grown adult who's getting paid to do a job, and they're not doing it. I will, I will hope that the school system pays close attention to these day treatment programs, and they make sure that they are rendering the services that they're supposed to. If not, then whatever contract that they have, or whatever reporting body that they have, needs to be looked at, and the reporting body needs to be notified as such, because I don't think that, you know, we want to have that coming back again, you know. I think we've already suffered enough with that, I mean, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There, Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Neal, good to see you. Happy New Year. We all dug out of the snow.
Yes.
I'm gonna start with day treatment first. We have had several discussions year over year about day treatment. We do know of issues. But what I really want to say is day treatment providers are not provided by Portsmouth Public Schools. So if we're talking about people being paid, and we're talking about people being paid and not being there, that is not out of our pocket, that is out of Medicaid's pocket. And I'm sure there's a 1-800 number for Medicaid fraud that anybody can call if they feel that there is an issue. So I don't, I just don't want it out in public that we're paying Medicaid people, that they're not doing their job, they're not on our payrolls. They are invited into our schools, their paycheck, everything is done through billing. So if there's a fraud issue, then I would suggest the 1-800 fraud alert number that is provided there. I'm just speaking frank, because they are not our employees. The conversations that we've had are lengthy, and the questions that we have are lengthy, and we still have those conversations, so it is an ongoing conversation, just so that you're aware. To go back to the addition of minutes to the school day, no decision when it comes to school days or making up days is popular. We would have taken a beating if we would have taken away every day between now and spring break. But the addition of minutes is eight minutes, depending on what we have to do for these next two days, because we haven't had that conversation yet. But what I'm gonna say is, as far as teachers being paid over, teachers, as much as I don't like it, because I'm a teacher as well, I still have to work for those days that I was out. So it is not an additional eight minutes to their contract time, it is making up for their time that they were paid for when they were out. As far as them working overtime, we'll have that conversation with Mr. Ziegler to make sure things are going over, but I do know that teachers get paid for set amount of hours. And if we take 180 days or 184 days that teachers are assigned to work and multiply that out by six and a half, they still are making out on the good end of this, meaning that there's four days in their contract that technically they're getting paid for that they're not having to report to. Now, we all know that teachers take homework, we all know that teachers work during snow days, I'm, I got text messages at 10:30 at night, because I got midterms coming up and projects due. We all know that as teachers, that happens. But when we're talking about contract hours, I don't believe, unless they're doing tutoring, after-school, Saturday school, but all of that comes at extra pay for them to do most of the time. But as far as the eight additional minutes, it's not that they're having to work over their contract hours, they're making up for their pay that they received while they were out. So it's a matter of the students making up the seat time, but it's also a way that teachers have to make up for what they missed when they were out on snow as well. And it's not a popular thing to sit up here and say, but I figure, I'm a teacher, I'm gonna have to say it, so let me just go ahead and say it. And so I wanted to address that. We do know that teacher morale plays a role, but I will say that not having a day off between, you know, January 12th and April the 1st is gonna be a morale issue too. So we take that into account. We also know that we cannot buy our way out of teacher morale, that is something that has to be developed and cultured and fed. And so all of this came into the consideration when we had these discussions, and it wasn't necessarily, none of it was gonna be a popular decision. But we did what we thought was best for both students and teachers. And so with that, I'm done, but Happy New Year.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate something that Ms. Hines said, we don't want misinformation getting out. And the day treatment specialists that are in the schools, as she said, they are paid by Medicaid, they're not our employees. And also, you know, we have to be careful about how we present information that's just anecdotal. You know, how many teachers, what incidence, what are the statistics? I mean, what we have here tonight is basically hearsay about what's going on. So I don't want the public to think that, you know, we're not doing our job, but these are people who are contracted, and they got paid through Medicaid, they're not our employees. So I just wanted to make that clear.
In fact, if I could just respond to both of them on that note, I was not saying that you all pay them. What I was saying was that because of what happened with the employee and the decision that was made from whatever the case involved in her with Medicaid, that I'm quite sure that you all, even though that you all don't pay them out of your budget, that because is that in that same scope, and they're providing a service to the school system students they're supposed to be, that somebody needs to have hindsight or oversight of making sure that that service is actually being rendered. And if it's not, then somebody from the school system, even though you all are not paying them, needs to say, hey, that we have students in our buildings that are supposed to be receiving these services through this program, and that they are not.
Dr. Whitaker?
Just one last thing. I just wanted to make it clear, as far as I know, unless I'm misinformed, that that particular employee was not working in the school system under the Medicaid contract.
Right. That's totally understood, that's what I, I said that earlier, that's what I was saying. But, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we are consistent if, whatever, because of the decision that was made with her case, that she was released from the school system. The same thing, that if you all are looking at that, then you need to look at the day treatment program, if they're doing the same thing too, whether, regardless of whether they're paid by y'all or paid by Medicaid. So that's what I was saying.
Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Parent. Mr. Neal, I want you to make sure that one piece that you mentioned, that I clear up. If there's a problem, as you mentioned, a teacher in her class and is in need of assistance from a day treatment counselor, then that conversation, she or he or she should have that conversation with the principal. And if there's a problem going on with any of the agencies within our schools, there is a reporting process that we have, that if, that our, we have our representative that can contact the lead of that agency and share these concerns, and then we can address that.
Totally understood. Thank you so much.
And just for a form of information, what just popped up is that Virginia Beach Public School is going to add 15 minutes to their school day beginning February 12th through May 4th. So all the school, you're gonna be seeing all the school divisions.
Right. So, and it's gonna be the same across, well, not just picking on Portsmouth, it's just gonna be the same, I work in an independent school, and we had the same conversation with our teachers, so.
Because we don't want to give up, we don't want to give up our spring break.
Right.
You got you. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. And going back to the minutes, we've talked about having minutes added, and we heard plenty that there were minutes that were added to calendars beforehand, and what happened to those minutes? What happened to those minutes was that they were absorbed into the school day. So our school day went from six hours and 15 minutes to, say, six and a half hours, which played out in the favor of our teachers at this point, because our school day is one of the longer ones in, I'm gonna say in the 757, but in the seven cities. So it's not the fact that we got those minutes and, you know, that it plays, it comes into play when you're actually sitting down and having to count minutes when you're talking about making up time. So it actually played into a part that we didn't have to make up five full days. We had two built in, we were able, because we went back for calendar revision several times, to take away half-days. And so when you get down and you start looking at hours, it makes it a little bit more feasible than to count days. And so we were very aware of the extra time that was added, who knows how long ago, when we came to these conversations, and that's why our time, our added time, has an end date on it. So we're accountable, y'all can hold us accountable to that, so that it just doesn't become this thing that this board did some odd years ago, and nobody's around to, left to answer that question. So just so that you know, the conversations that were had, and sometimes people just need to know the conversations that were had and what we're aware of, but we just need to make sure that everybody, this is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Dr. Bracy, so there isn't any miscommunication amongst the teachers, is there a way you can compose a letter and send it out to the principals so they can communicate that to their administration? Because the extra minutes thing, not the snow makeup minutes, but something that was built in the previous years have been floating around, and I just want to end that whole miscommunication thing tonight.
Okay, I will, I will look into that, and we will address it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers, please?
Ms. Donna Sye.
Good evening. My name is Donna Sye, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Donna was reviewing the budget for the year 2017-18, and came across goal two, social emotional development that reads strengthen practices and policies focused on social emotional development. The funding for positive behavioral intervention and support PBS program is $43,000. Donna worked on educating the principals of 19 schools in May 2015, when she witnessed seven suspensions at the April 2015 school board meeting. Donna had graduated from the International Institute for Restorative Practice in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania in June 2011, with a master's degree in restorative practice and youth counseling. When Donna witnessed the punitive nature of the school board in handling discipline issues, she was called to serve the community. In fact, the last booklet she delivered was to John Tyler Elementary School. She met Dr. Bracy leaving the school, and she shared with him what she was doing. After delivering all the booklets, she started obtaining signatures from the people. Donna delivered those petitions to the school board members at the September 24th, 2015 school board meeting. These petitions directed the school board to implement the safer, saner schools, whole school change program. Restorative justice practices teaches students had a resolved conflict at the time and place where it occurs, in the classroom. Donna met with Dr. Nguyen and Ms. Sandler in December 2015 to review how the funds are spent for the at-risk youth students. Donna obtained the itemized copy of at-risk category for the year 2015-16. She learned that at-risk department includes other categories besides discipline, homelessness, attendance, substance abuse, and incarcerated parents. Donna didn't understand how the at-risk youth department relates to the role of new direction to alternative school. Donna met with Dr. Bracy in March of 2017 to find out if he had done any investigation with the superintendent of the Bethlehem area school district to learn about how to implement restorative justice practices. He had not. In the budget for 2017-18 today, Donna came across goal two, social emotional development that reads strengthen practices and policies focused on social emotional development. The funding for positive behavioral intervention and support PBS program is $43,000. At this time, Donna feels violated by the rejection of the information that she has provided from May 2015 to present. The information is to help heal the wounds of the community, the schools, the parents, and students by addressing harm and restoring relationships. What about the community members who signed the petition? They are in support of a method to hold students accountable and teach them a skill that will serve them for life. The skill the students will learn is how to resolve conflict in a matter, in a manner to have their needs met. The budget is supported by taxpayers' money to pay for the PBS program? How is the information of the results of the PBS usage going to be announced at the school board meetings? How was this information given to the public before it was decided to be implemented? What skills have the students learned? I witnessed seven suspension at the last school board meeting. How did the PBS intervention help? How did the PBS intervention help these students and why didn't it help these students? Donna needs a meeting with the principals of the schools where these students were suspended to ask them questions. Donna would like to share with you the reason she is so passionate about restorative justice practices. Her experience growing up on the farm in Stony Creek, Virginia was great as far as being in touch with nature. When it came to family, church, and school relationships, there were none. Donna was a candidate to be used and abused until she learned skills to stand up for herself by June 11, 2011, when she graduated from IIRP. Donna does not want to see any child, parent, or community member being taken advantage of because he or she lacks the social skills to resolve conflict. This is why Donna wants to know all about the communication skills, being used to teach students how to repair harm and restore relationships. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I think our speaker, Ann Wilber, has arrived.
Chairman Parent, school board members, Dr. Bracy, my name is Ann Wilber. I live in the Waterview neighborhood and I'm here as a member of the Board of the Lefco Alumni Association. First, please accept my apologies for not being here when my name was called. I was at a committee meeting for the event that I'm going to share information with you about. The Lefco Alumni Association has partnered with TCC and Portsmouth Public Schools, as well as some various training programs throughout the Hampton Roads area, and is putting on a forum for any interested party, but primarily targeted to Portsmouth Public School high school students. It's a workforce development forum entitled, "Jobs in Trade and Industry." It is on February 1st, which is next Thursday, at 6:00 p.m. at the TCC Portsmouth Campus Student Center. Everyone is welcome to attend and I believe each of you should have received a letter and an invitation to that event. Through our research, we have identified many different training programs available to people at low or no cost that would provide an education or a certificate that would put someone into construction, maritime, healthcare, and public safety industries. We have representatives from the Tideboard Builders Association Builder, Building Academy, from the Mid-Atlantic Maritime Academy, from Opportunity Inc., which is a job training and job skills program that is the workforce, federal workforce development arm in this area, from Junior Achievement that Portsmouth Public Schools has recently partnered with, hopefully from the Virginia Ship Repair Association, and then we will have Craig Hill from Portsmouth Public Schools talking about all the possibilities that Portsmouth Public Schools makes available, as well as Corey McCray from TCC talking about all of the different certificate programs. Craig Hill suggested that I let you all know about this forum in addition to the invitation that you received. I have a copy of the agenda if any of you are interested in our agenda, and I would hope that we would see some or all of you at our event on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you leave a copy?
Why don't you leave, yeah, there you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for board agenda items?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Human Resources and Operation Report. Dr. Bracy, I assume Mr. Ziegler is coming and he's going to give the report. I like the pictures.
Oh, thank you. Good evening once again, board members.
Good evening.
As I often do after storms, I would like to send a shout-out of appreciation and gratitude to the hard-working ladies and gentlemen of our operations crew. As you know, because we just talked about makeup time, in January, we were inundated with snowfall. And hopefully you had a chance to watch my live tour of the Portsmouth area on Twitter one night. But after every storm, we do have, ladies and gentlemen, mostly our custodians and operation crew, who go out and clear by hand the sidewalks and walkways around the buildings. And this is so that students can enter buildings. When we do reopen, in safe manner, staff can get through to the different doors that they use, and so that all of these areas are clean. This time around, we were helped by Sheriff Moore's inmate work crew to help clear the walkways, and we were able to do that in a matter of hours, which meant we were able to open on time the day after the snow cleared from the roads. So I would like to thank, thank our operations crew. Also in the pictures, if you'll notice, we have completed the workstations at IC Norcom High School in the cosmetology lab, and they are open for business. And if Dr. Foster was still here, I'd have him come model his nails. They look fantastic because he goes and sees the students in that program to have his nails done on a regular basis. So if you ever need that service, feel free to stop by Norcom and take advantage of that new equipment that your forward thinking has provided for that program. If there are no questions, I would ask you to please consider the transaction report as it is also presented in my report this evening.
Board, board members, you have reviewed the employee transaction report. What is your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ziegler. And thank your staff because they've done a great job. The next item on the agenda is our budget and planning, the financial report.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, school board members. The budget and finance report for December 2017 has been provided, and I'm here to answer any questions there are.
No?
Move for approval? Second.
Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, board members, please indicate your preference, electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is consideration to appoint Portsmouth Public Schools OPEB Committee Trust Member. Storch.
So the resolution that is before you today is to add the citizen member that the city recently appointed. So the resolution reads, whereas section 15.2-1544 of the Code of Virginia, as amended, provides that a local school board may establish a trust or similar arrangement for the purpose of accumulating and investing assets to fund post-employment benefits, accepting pensions for school division retirees. And whereas on July 1st, 2018, excuse me, 2008, the City of Portsmouth, Virginia School Board established the Portsmouth Public Schools OPEB Trust for the exclusive benefit of employees of the school division who become participants. And in appointed Wells Fargo Institutional Retirement Trust, a business unit of Wells Fargo Bank, a trustee of PPS OPEB Trust. And whereas the City of Portsmouth, Virginia School Board established the Trust Committee to administer the trust. And whereas on October 6, 2016, a resolution was adopted appointing the following individuals to serve on the OPEB Trust Committee with terms commencing on October 6, 2016. Chairperson of the school board, vice chairperson, superintendent, chief financial officer, director of accounting, benefit supervisor. And whereas via a letter dated December 29, 2017, from the Portsmouth City Attorney, which has been attached pursuant to section 15.2-1547 of the Code of Virginia, the City Council of the City of Portsmouth has appointed Mr. Mark Munson of Portsmouth, Virginia as the citizen member to serve on the Trust Committee. And whereas the term of the citizen member shall end on December 31, 2019. Now therefore be resolved that this resolution will take effect on January 25, 2018.
Board members, you have read and you have just heard the resolution. What is your pleasure, please?
Move for approval?
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, board members, please indicate your preference, through electronic Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Is Mr. Munson here tonight?
No, he is not.
Okay.
But he will be at our next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank you very much. All right. All right, Dr. Bracy, moving right along. It's your time. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, sir. I don't have a written report in the, in board docs, but I would like, I have a couple items that I'd like to share. First, that the February 26, we will have our joint meeting with the school board and city council at 6 o'clock. So we look forward to our annual meeting with them. And also, coming up January 25th, I'll be, I'll be visiting the Lefco leadership class. I look forward to that each year, and each year I have, usually in the past, I've had the teacher of the year to attend with me. They always ask for me to bring a teacher, so I always see if the reigning teacher of the year is able to come. So I look forward to attending and sharing the many wonderful things that we have going on within Portsmouth Public Schools. And last, but definitely not least, and I probably should have led with this, I am, and I know we're so pleased to have Ms. Sharice Newsom back with us tonight. Our new director of communications since she's been out, but she's, she's not back yet. You know, she's filling in because Ms. O'Hara had a previous engagement tonight, so she did come out to fill in for us tonight. So we're looking forward to her eventually making it back full-time. So Sharice, welcome, and we look forward to seeing you within a couple or so weeks, two weeks? Two weeks, okay. All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Ms. Allen?
Are we on board? Board member comments?
Oh. All right, the next item, I thought you wanted to.
I hit it to her.
That's okay, that's not a problem. Now, board member comments. Ms. Allen?
Okay, I have two things for this evening. Number one, I'd like to thank Ann Wilber for coming out tonight as a graduate of the 2010 class of the Lefco alumni, of the Lefco Leadership Development Course and a former board member of the Lefco alumni. This looks like it's going to be an awesome program. I know a lot of hard work went into planning this, so thank you. It's always great to have opportunities where our citizens can interact with our schools because together we achieve more. So thank you for coming out tonight. Just a reminder, tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., there is going to be a celebration to acknowledge the placement of a historical highway marker honoring IC Norcom's high school namesake, Israel Charles Norcom. So we'll be out at IC Norcom tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. for that wonderful achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Just two things real quick. The first one, I was, had the opportunity to go to Parkview Elementary School a couple days ago. My days are off. I'm still trying to get back into a swing with school and snow days. Yeah, exactly. I, I just enjoyed what I was seeing. I mean, this time around, I'm walking around in the halls and classes were engaged, I saw more interaction, hands-on activities. But the one thing I enjoyed the most, and I don't know whose idea it was, each classroom had, right outside the door, a kind of like a goal, each teacher had a goal, an education statement, and, and something else, I just don't remember. But it was very unique, reading those and seeing the philosophies that each person had, and it actually reflected what I saw going on in the classroom. So it was just a pleasant visit. The second item I want to just bring up is, last Saturday, I had a, just a small, I wasn't even sure what, how it was going to go over, but just a chat with Ted. We had it at Baby Talk Cafe just to interact and engage with citizens. Again, I wasn't sure how it was going to go over, but it was very, it was a vibrant conversation, had many people show up, stayed the whole time. Many topics came up, very similarly to the topics that was mentioned this evening, everything from CTE programs, school safety and security, the PTAs with regards to relationship and involvement, just a lot of different topics that I think was worthwhile and engaging to take part in, and I look forward to doing it again in the future. So thank you.
Good. Board members, you received a copy of the special committees and assignments, and I appreciate you taking on those responsibilities and look forward to working with you, I mean, of this year. And the next item on the agenda, if there are no more comments from board members, the next item is the adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjournment.
A motion's been made. And second, that we adjourn? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.